To our second meeting of February. Hope everyone had a great Valentine's Day and took advantage of the unusually warm weather today. But let's get the show going.
Happy Mardi Gras.
And happy Fat Tuesday. Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach held Tuesday, February 16th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We have a roll call. Councilmember Delory.
Present.
Councilmember Mandel.
Present.
Councilmember Triston.
Present.
Vice President McGinnis.
Present.
President Bendo.
Present.
Let the record indicate the President and City Manager Donna Gaden and Deputy Corporation Council Rich Barrios for now to the flag.
All right, I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Triston to lead us.
Hands over heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And I guess we will start with the city manager's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Can you move Ron Walsh up? He's my first speaker for tonight. Okay, Ron, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention some excellent police work by two members of our police department that actually took place on two separate incidents. The first one happened on Friday, February 12th, just last week. Bill McCullough was assigned to a call for a dog at large. He was able to locate the dog, but wasn't really successful in trying to capture the dog. A lot of times when you pull up to these scenes, you open up the door of the car and, you know, the dogs jump in. This particular dog wasn't having really any part of that whatsoever. So at about 7:06, the dog, 7:06 in the morning, the dog runs down onto a dock. In the area where this took place, there was like waist-deep water and there were like weeds and reeds that grew up. So made it kind of look to the, like it was solid ground. The dog jumps into the water. Now, the dog jumped into the water and immediately starts having a lot of difficulty swimming because the reeds and everything are getting stuck around its legs and it's too deep for him to stand. As this was happening, the fire department was there and the animal control officers were there. The animal control officer was trying to put on his wet suit to jump in and try to rescue the dog, but the dog started to drown, wasn't able to keep itself above water. So Officer McCullough, Brian McCullough, jumped in the water with his boots, his uniform, his gun, every single piece of equipment, his vest jumped right into the water and went over to the dog, rescues the dog, carries it to safety and, you know, they evaluated him with the fire department, evaluated him. But, you know, that's a very selfless act in water that was up to his chest apparently. And I really wanted to bring attention to great work and I'm sure our animal lovers will absolutely love the fact that he did that. And I just hope that the city council joins me in thanking him for a great job. So I don't know that Brian made it onto the call tonight and tried to reach out to him, but I'm sure he would appreciate any words that you guys might have to say about that.
I think it's an outstanding effort, Commissioner, and very selfless. And I'm sure hopefully he's all right after that cold water. He's okay, too. And it's amazing, but thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Truly up and above, outstanding.
Thank you. The next officer I would like to bring to our attention, and Dave, I don't know if Officer Halsted made it on. Do you see that she's on at all?
I just allowed her to talk.
Okay, great. So maybe at the end of this, you guys can ask me some questions, but if you want to thank her yourselves. But on, I guess, I'm trying to just find the date here. So Officer Halsted is one of our newest officers. She actually came to the police department as recently as this November 20th. So she's been here for about three and a half months. She had four years' experience with the NYPD. But on the evening of January 19th, 2021, Officer Halsted was patrolling Broadway when she observed the vehicle go through a red traffic signal without stopping. She conducted a traffic stop on the vehicle in order to write a ticket, but she kind of sensed that something wasn't right with the individual and she began to do a more thorough investigation. Through her digging deeper, Officer Halsted was able to discover that the driver had multiple suspensions on his driver's license and an active arrest warrant from Suffolk County, an active bench warrant from Nassau County. And while finding those things is lovable enough, during the arrest processing and while doing what's called an inventory search of the suspect's vehicle, Officer Halsted discovers that the driver has approximately 10 pounds of marijuana packed in airtight containers in the trunk of the vehicle, which is a Class D felony. Now, in police work, making vehicle stops, we never really consider any of them routine. They're usually some of the most dangerous things that we ever get involved in. But Officer Halsted actually recognized, you know, and even though her initial reason for the stop was a traffic infraction, she recognized that something wasn't right. She was very tenacious with this particular stop. She went with her instincts and really made an outstanding arrest. And the city of Long Beach, in my opinion, is very lucky to have Officer Halsted on board. We look forward to a lot more years of her service. And for me, these two examples of our, from our police officers is just another example to this city of the outstanding work that our officers do, their commitment. And I want to congratulate them both, but I believe Megan's on the line. And I wanted to say thank you to Megan and open it up to you guys if you have any questions or comments for her.
Officer Halsted, this is Liz Triston. And to the police commissioner, I just want to thank both of you for adding to our council with our new refreshed look at our police department and the, and the risk that you take every day. And thank you.
Thank you. Megan, if you're muted, they won't be able to hear you. I don't know if you can talk.
All right. Okay. Yeah, but great, great job. This is the kind of great news our residents want to hear about. I guess this is the stuff that a lot of people, unless they get pulled over, they really don't have much interaction with our police, so they don't know all the stuff that's going on out there and what our officers are doing out there. So this is, this is, this is good stuff.
And Commissioner, I just wanted to ask, what time of day or night did this happen? Was it like in the wee hours or do we know?
You know, I just closed my details of this, but I believe Megan's, Megan's was definitely in the evening. And it was, it was, it was a, it was, I think, I think 11 o'clock is coming to mind, around 11 o'clock at night. She now works day tours for us. She recently was moved to a day tour position. But this was around 11 o'clock at night, when I believe this started 10 or 11 o'clock at night. And it was a relatively difficult arrest to kind of get through with her because it was very involved. You had traffic infractions, you had two different kinds of warrants, an arrest warrant, and you also had a bench warrant. So they had two separate kinds of warrants. Then you had the D felony, you had to voucher all the drugs and stuff like that. It was really outstanding work with her. And it was actually, it was funny, I know she's on the phone, but when I called her originally, I called her to congratulate her for the work. And I think she was a little taken back because she's like, gee, why is the Commissioner of Police calling me? Did I do something wrong? And it was really to compliment her on just great work and the type of thing and the tenacity that we're really looking for in our officers. And it made me very proud to be associated with the department as well as Brian's. I mean, I don't know that I would have jumped in, you know, chest-deep water in the middle of February to rescue a dog. I mean, I would have done whatever I could, but jumping in the water might have been a little bit beyond my body's ability to tolerate. So I really compliment him. I just think it's fantastic that we have such dedicated cops. I really do.
Yeah, I agree, Commissioner. Thank you, Officer Halsted. It's a great job. Thank you.
Two great, two great officers. Thank you and thank you, Commissioner.
Sure thing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Next is Monique Powell from Youth and Family Services and Community Development.
Thank you. Good evening, all. So just as an update of Youth and Family Services, we, again, we activated the department in making it as a whole. We have streamlined the systems as far as our daycare, early childhood programs. So we talked about that previously. We're moving forward. March 1st will be the launch date where we will inform families. Staff is currently doing training this week about how we're launching this new software, which is a student information system software called ProCare. So we are all excited for that and staffing. This whole week, staff is doing CPR training, updating our training so that we are up to code and requirement. Youth, youth services, we have a couple of programs that's going along. We have a Black Kid Magic that is on February 27th. Currently, we're doing the African-American scavenger hunt at the local city parks where kids, as long as they have permission of their families, can visit a local city park in their community in their area and look for the QR codes that we placed at the parks. They can scan the QR code and learn about African-American inventors. So that's currently going on. Last week, we had a cupcake decorating. It went live as far as the photos and the results of it, where the kids were able to decorate cupcakes. And they took home two dozen cupcakes to their Valentine. Right now, we're going to start the youth academic tutoring services, one-on-one, where families have an option to come to the Magnolia Center on the second floor for their tutoring, or they can have the one-on-one tutoring remotely at home. So we're currently starting that. As we move on to our senior services, we started to look into the survey that we provided. And one of the needs were that our seniors said that they need to be in touch with families and friends. So Melissa Cohen and I are looking into more detail of what that looked like so that we can meet their needs. And we, you know, we have some examples, so stay tuned for that. But we are excited to start the senior services as well. We're not doing in-person right now, but we're going to try to meet their needs, providing food, drive-through, and even some type of remote services to them. For community development, we are starting to look at the needs of the community. And one of the programs that we're going to start is the micro enterprise business program. So we're very excited to launch this micro enterprise business program. It's going to start in March. And what it is, is a program that helps small businesses that has five or fewer employees to, and provide them with assistance during these times. And that could be as technical assistance, training, resources. In addition to that, we're doing small business assistance where we're going to help those who would like to start their business. And of course, this is community development funds. So we're looking into the minority businesses to help minority, to increase minority ownership in Long Beach. And as brief, that is, that's what we're working on.
Are there any questions for Monique? Okay, the micro enterprise is on the agenda tonight for a vote. The next person that I have is Mr. John Morando. And during our last meeting, Roy Lester asked some questions and Mr. Morando was not on the call that particular night. So I asked him to give Roy a call to answer those questions. And what I said to everyone that was at that meeting, I would ask Mr. Morando to come back and tell the public what the answers to those questions were, so that everybody would be on the same page. So John Morando, if you would go ahead, I'd greatly appreciate it. John?
He's unmuted.
John, we can't hear you.
Okay, he just muted and unmuted.
John, you may have to go back, go out and come back in. And while we're waiting for that, we can go on to John McNally.
Sure. Everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. City manager just wanted me to give a brief update on COVID. So for the week ending February 14th, there were 116 new positive cases in Long Beach, which averages out to 16.62 per day over a seven-day period. So that's, we are, we are down from, the numbers are still higher than we were over the summer. But we are obviously down from the holiday peak, roughly half of where we are or where we were. For instance, the seven-day average per thousand residents is .5 now, where we were hovering, you know, just above 1 during, during the holiday peak that we had. We will see if there is a Super Bowl peak. We, we hope not. Certainly hope that there's not a Mardi Gras peak two weeks from now. For the Long Island region as a whole, you know, the key metrics that the state is looking at is percent of available ICU beds. That's holding at 21%. It has been remarkably consistent. And the positivity rate for Nassau and Suffolk combined is 4.58%. So statewide, it's in the mid-3s, but Long Island, for the first time, you know, really since the holidays, has gotten below that 5% threshold. So that is good news. And then in terms of vaccination information, we would encourage folks to go to Nassau County's website because they have information that is independent of just the state. So that's NassauCountyNY.gov. And they have a search bar up top. The easy, it's not an easy link to get to, so I would just hit the search bar and type in vaccine. And it takes you right to their vaccination page, which tells you not just information for the state site, but information for some of the county sites for Northwell. So it gives folks some additional opportunities to potentially find an available slot to get a vaccine. Similarly, New York State still is running their hotline. The number for that is 833-697-4829. Again, that's 833-697-4829. We still remain in the same situation that we've been with vaccines where demand just greatly outnumbers the supply. Last week, the governor included comorbidities. So, you know, cancer patients, immunocompromised, there's, there's a whole list on the state website and even the county's website on what those comorbidities are, underlying conditions that make, you know, that population more, more vulnerable or higher risk with COVID. So including that new subset, there are now 10 million New Yorkers eligible. And the state is still just getting over 300,000 vaccination slots a week. So, you know, I know some of the sites are booked up through April at this stage of the game already. But we do know that the people that receive the calls on the vaccination hotline, the state hotline, they get live data. So if somebody shows up to Jones Beach to get their vaccination and they showed up and they had two separate appointments and they were holding on to a later date, that, that second appointment that they're not honoring that day immediately goes back into the hopper for somebody else. So even though, you know, even though reservations are full, continue to try use patients and, you know, hopefully with Johnson &amp; Johnson getting approved next week, potentially, that's going to increase supplies as well. Donna, do you want me to retalk about the pop-up again from last week? Because there still seems to be a little bit.
Yes, there's still questions. People thinking that it was the city.
Sure. So as I think a lot of people are aware at this stage of the game, the city hosted a vaccination pop-up site at the Magnolia Center last Thursday. This is a program really run by the governor's office. They reached out the prior Friday and said, we would like to be holding this in Long Beach. It's part of their equity and vaccination distribution efforts. So what they're trying to do is get the shots in the arms of, you know, really minority and low-income populations. Those populations have been the most disproportionately impacted by COVID. They're, you know, extreme high number of cases in those communities. And they're also communities that both historically and presently during this pandemic have very low vaccination numbers. So this is a concerted effort to, you know, if you have 10% of the population is African-American, 10% of the population that gets vaccinated should be African-American. And it's really, you know, in terms of, in terms of low income, what the city did, in addition to reaching out to or opening up the facility, the city worked with our Long Beach Housing Authority, which is our public housing. And the housing authority, they have four separate senior buildings. And they knocked on the door of, they knocked on every single door in those buildings and made those seniors aware that this was happening. And our transportation department worked to shuttle those folks. And all in that one day, we got 386 shots in people's arms over a five-hour period. And amongst those folks were more than 50% of the, the population in our senior housing. So, you know, this is a governor's initiative. We're never going to say no to any opportunity to get shots in arms in our community. We continue to advocate for them to expand opportunities and increase opportunities locally. Walgreens came online last week. So we'll continue those advocacy efforts and really make the case why we need, we need more resources in Long Beach. But this was, you know, a good effort that had some great results. You know, and are thankful for the governor and, you know, Senator Kaminsky and even our faith-based leaders who helped do some of the outreach to this in the community to make sure that the governor's target population was, was really reached, you know, through this pop-up event. Any questions?
Okay, Mr. Morando.
John, we're still not hearing you. You're unmuted, but we're not hearing you. Now, John, try, try to mute yourself and unmute yourself again.
Donna, while we're waiting, do we know what the questions were that Roy had, or Miss, whoever asked it, what they?
It was Roy, and I have Roy on the, Roy is in the meeting and he texts me because he did say that John did talk to him. I don't have the questions with me. Well, if we could just.
Well, I was gonna say, if we can't get this to work here in the next.
I was gonna say, Roy has his hand up, but I was gonna say that's the end of my report.
Okay. We could always cover this at the next meeting.
What'd you say?
I said, we could cover it at the next meeting if we have to.
Yeah, but you need to, Roy has his hand up. But that's, that's the end of my report.
Donna?
Oh, hi, Roy.
Hi. You know, I just wanted to tell you people what happened. John was great about it. He really educated me a lot on the recycling. Basically, you know, my concern is what it's costing us and that people aren't aware of, of how much more expensive it is to put a piece of paper in the garbage can. But basically, he was telling me that it goes to, I think it's Sanitation Area 1 or Sanitation District 1, and from there it goes to Omni. And, you know, it just, he says it's a lot cheaper that way. I don't quite understand, and I, I'm not sure he quite knows why, when we get a middleman involved, it gets cheaper. Usually, a middleman costs more money, but he did answer most of my questions. I still, you know, I'm curious about the amount of tonnage and stuff like that. There are a lot of numbers that I would like to know, but he, he was really good about answering it. And it's something that really has to be addressed because, and this is not just a Long Beach problem, it's a national problem. We're running out of landfill. We can only burn a certain amount. You know, it's something that has to be addressed, but I don't, do want to tell you, John did answer the questions and he answered them, telling me where the recycling is going, where the regular garbage is going and stuff like that, and the cost of it. And basically, he said it's $85 for regular garbage. It's 80, 85 a ton, $80 a ton for the glass recycling and $40 a ton for the paper recycling. And the paper recycling up till this year was $2.50, $2.50 a ton. So, you know, it was a shame that nobody knew about that because everybody would have made a lot more of an effort to throw away their paper into the recycling than the garbage if they knew it was costing us that much. But like you say, he was great about it.
Roy, I would have to say John Morando did a really good job in giving you the information because you spit back the information for the public to hear, and that is the correct information. So I appreciate that you came on since we can't hear John. And especially to, to thank John for giving you such great information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's the end of my report.
Okay, great. So why don't we move on to the agenda then?
John, I just have a quick update, please.
Okay.
I don't know if everybody is aware, but we're hitting an important milestone next week here with the council and the city administration. Next week marks a year in service for City Manager Donna Gaden. So we have had, we have had a dedicated and outstanding professional city manager of Long Beach for the past year. This signals continuity in our leadership. And I think she, her dedication to the city is unparalleled. And we're very grateful that she's, she's staying, she's still here with us. So thank you on behalf of everyone. Donna, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
What a year, huh?
Yeah.
And then some.
You can write a book on your first year, Donna.
Yeah. Still waiting for the locusts to show up.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we're still waiting for the locusts, though.
All right. Let's move on to the, to the agenda.
Okay, our first item is a public hearing for resolution granting waiver of off-street parking requirements for 163 East Park Avenue, street floor, for a kosher foods and grocery product shop. We have the owner on. Hold on. Okay, I've asked him to unmute. Okay, sir. Yep, there we are. Okay, John, the owner is on.
Okay, great. So good evening. And so what are we doing here? You just moving across the street?
Yes.
Okay, so thought maybe we might get a second location, but all right, well, as long as you stay, and that's good. So how, how long have you been in business in your current location?
Over 24 years.
Wow. Okay. Is the new location larger?
Not really. More or less the same or smaller.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And you're going, this is Councilwoman Triston, and you're going from where to where?
172 East Park Avenue going to 163 East Park Avenue, right across.
Right. So right now, he's next to Baskin Robbins and he's going across the street next to Curves.
Oh, okay.
So he's basically crossing the street. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, you're already a business here, so I mean, I don't really have a lot of questions. I don't know if any of the other council members have any questions. All right, here and none. Why don't we see if we have any from the public?
Nothing at this time.
Great. Okay, why don't we, why don't we vote on that now so Mr. Zaghi doesn't have to stay on the line?
Okay, so we're gonna call calendar item number two, which is a resolution granting waiver of off-street parking requirements for PMS 163 East Park Avenue, street floor, for a kosher foods and grocery product shop. I want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting. Councilmember Delory?
Yes, and good luck.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Triston?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes, and we hope you are successful in your new location.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and you have a good night.
You, too. Thanks. Thanks for inviting me.
Okay, take care. Okay, take care. Okay, let's move on to our next public hearing.
Okay, our second public hearing is for an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding vehicles for hire.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, is anyone speaking on this, just the? Oh, and we have an amendment.
We have an amendment, that's what, that's what I was just going to-
Sorry, sorry, we do have an amendment. I'd like to move, we amend at the bottom of page one for item three under section twenty-four seventy-nine. Second sentence where it says inside storage rates may be determined by agreement of the parties. I'd like to propose we change parties to tow operator and vehicle owner.
Do I have a second?
I will.
Voting on, to amend, Councilmember Delory.
I'm just writing it in on my sheet, yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Treston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes. Okay, so, so anyway, just what we're doing here is, and I don't know if Donna, if you have anyone who's gonna speak, but we're just basically updating some of the, some of the fees and somebody criteria for the tow companies that operate in Long Beach. This hasn't been done in a while, so we're bringing, we're bringing us into the twenty-first century on this. I don't know, Donna, you got anything with Dave? You got anything to add or Rich?
This pretty much brings us in line with, with a lot of the fees and some, some of the policies of the town of Hempstead. Most of our tow operators are based in the town of Hempstead, so typically, we follow suit with them. It just makes things a lot easier for us when we're in sync with the town.
Okay. And I guess I'll just note one thing for the, for the council members, that it's not clear in the ordinance on page one of the section twenty-four seventy-eight towing charges, section A, then there's subsection one. In the current code, there's also a subsection two, but that's being removed. Normally, that would be shown in italics when we're removing something, but for whatever reason, it didn't make it here, but it's being removed.
President Bendo, I just have one question for Rich. The rotation tow list fee, it's probably been in here. Do we know what that is? I mean, is that a fee that we charge the licensed vehicle tow owner?
It's what we charge the tow operator to be, if they want to be included on the police tow list.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
And I got a question. The, the bottom paragraph on page one, it talks about outside storage charges, but then for inside storage charges, it just says agreed by the tow operator and the vehicle owner. What, we define all the other charges, why did we not define this one?
We followed the, that's the way that's defined with the towns, we followed their, their definition.
So it just makes us consistent with that?
Right.
Okay. Any other council members got questions? All right, why don't we open it up to the public?
Okay, we have Roy Lester, hang on one second. Go ahead, Roy.
Keep trying to unmute. John, I've made this suggestion before, and it would be great if we could know what the charges are being upped from. In other words, like you said, normally, when we take something out, we put it in parentheses. Since we're changing something, why can't we put it in parentheses, but just for transparency, so people know, you know, it's now gonna be the first miles, a hundred seventy-five, it used to be ten dollars or something like that, or it used to be two hundred, or just whatever it changed from. It's really not that difficult to put it in, and, and people would be able to read this with a little bit more comprehension.
Well, it's also not difficult to do what the council members do, is we go on the city website. We look at the code of ordinances, see what it says now, and then we look and see what it's being changed to.
Why, John, John, you guys are already doing it, why should the public have to do that? Why make it difficult for the public?
Roy, Roy, duly noted.
Thank you, thank you, Donna.
Okay, any other comments?
I have no other hands at this time.
Okay, let's move on to the next public hearing.
Hold on one second, I'm just trying to. Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Okay, so our third public hearing is for an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding licenses and business regulations.
Okay, we have an amendment on this one as well. I would like to propose, let's see, on the section fourteen dash two thirteen, the first sentence where it says signs shall be erected and maintained at all times at each entrance to every parking lot. I would like to move, we add the word private between every and parking, so it says signs shall be erected and maintained at all times at each entrance to every private parking lot.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes, as amended.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Treston.
Yes, as amended.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, any words of wisdom on this one from Dave, Rich, Donna, anyone?
I can.
Yeah, go ahead, Rich.
How do you start? So this is essentially taking out section fourteen dash two twelve for maximum rates. If you'll remember during some of our working sessions, we discussed some of the impediments or inhibitions that private lot owners have to go into the parking business and procure a mercantile license. This was one of those provisions that would kind of put a cap on what they could earn. So we removed said cap to enable them to have the incentive to go ahead and, and potentially, you know, operate a parking business on a, on an improved parking lot. And the other portion of this code amendment, which is as it relates to section fourteen dash two thirteen, just kind of zeroes in on the sign requirements that these private parking lot owners, should they decide to go into business, what they would have to put on these signs. Also includes in section fourteen dash fifteen, the, the rates for the mercantile fees and distinguishes them from parking lots that are associated with, with, with an incident in business. So for example, parking lots, a parking lot mercantile license for someone like seven eleven would have to pay the hundred and fifty-five because they don't charge for parking, it's just incident to their business. And that's, that's what I have.
Okay.
Anything you want to follow up on McNally? Did I cover it?
No, I mean, I think, I think that, that covers the general gist of it, but you know, the, the origin of this is obviously that the city was leasing three total private lots to the tune of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year and only receiving fifty thousand dollars a year in residential permit fees. And considering the financial constraints that the city is in, the, the decision was made to not continue those leases. So this was a way to try and, and I'm about to get attacked by three little girls, sorry. This was, this was decided to be the, the solution for this of get the city out of, of the parking business and make this at least an attractive offer for the owners of the private lots so that they could, they could operate these things in a profitable fashion. Because previously, they would have been capped at only being able to charge a hundred dollars a month, and that's obviously not going to make it worth their while. So this allows them to, you know, be on the free market and, and, and charge free market value.
Also, it doesn't mean necessarily that these private lot owners will go into said business, it just at least gives them the incentive to do so. It's not like we have some sort of deal cut with private lot owners at this point.
Thank you, Rich, for that clarification.
My, by the way, before I start, thank you very much for addressing this as fast as you have. It's almost like lifting up the restrictions or the ceiling should somebody want to test the market for parking rates. Rich, I have a question for you. Tow companies' telephone contact number and tow rates, along with the verbiage. Would I be correct in saying that should a person want to privatize their lot? And they put up a sign, and the tow company or the tow operator's information, does that tow operator have to pay a fee under the previous item number three that we just talked about, where it says rotation tow list fee? Or is this mutually exclusive?
I can answer that. They wouldn't have to pay necessarily the rotational toll fee, but they do have to pay the licensing fee and be a licensed and proper tower. So they do have to be a licensed tower.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Yep.
So to Dave's point, yeah, you basically still have to register as a, as a towing company to do business here.
Thank you, oh, thank you both.
Okay, any other questions from the council? All right, we got any from the public?
No hands at this time.
All right.
Okay, on to the regular calendar. Item one is approval of minutes from prior meeting of December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion for, to approve?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Treston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay, we already called and voted item two. Item three is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding vehicles for hire. A hearing has been held on this item already. Item four is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding licenses and business regulations. A hearing has been held on this item already. Item five is a resolution-
Before we move on, we didn't do it, but let's close both hearings on item three and four.
Okay.
So, okay, officially closed.
Okay, item five is a resolution declaring, excuse me, and designating Juneteenth as an official holiday in the city of Long Beach.
All right, I can talk on it, or Donna, do you wanna talk on it, or?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, so
You, you and Karen.
Okay, so so what we're doing is we've, we've worked with a couple of the cities' unions and we're going to make, or we're proposing to make Juneteenth a holiday. What they will do is they will give up, right now, they currently get Lincoln's birthday and President's Day both. What will happen now is instead of getting Lincoln's, they will give up Lincoln's birthday and now get Juneteenth as a holiday instead. So the same number of holidays. Now, that means because Lincoln's birthday just happened that they will not get Juneteenth this fiscal year or this year because they got Lincoln's birthday, so this will go into effect next year. But it's just a, a one-for-one swap to acknowledge it and and Karen, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm really proud of, of Long Beach for recognizing the importance of Juneteenth. I think this is something that everyone of all cultures and races and religions should just consider and reflect upon as part of our nation's history. And that as a culturally diverse community, we can always do better to make sure that all members of our community feel recognized, important, and valued. So I'm very proud to be, that we're, we're doing this today. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's very appropriate we do it now during Black History Month. So, and, and just a little quick history for those of you that may not know what, what Juneteenth is. During the Civil War on January first of eighteen sixty-three, Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, which freed all the slaves. But word of the Emancipation Proclamation never got down south to some of the states, including Texas. And it wasn't until the Union Army showed up in Texas in eighteen sixty-five, two years later, that news of the Emancipation Proclamation got to the slaves in Texas, and that was on June thirteenth, uh, June nineteenth of eighteen sixty-five. So for two years, they didn't know about the Emancipation Proclamation. So that's, that's the, the genesis of Juneteenth. So, so just a little history, so people understand why this is a kind of a significant day. So with that, any questions from the council? Okay, and I guess it's just worth noting that this was something that was worked out with the CSCA and the Commanding Officers Association, two of the unions. It's still being discussed with the firefighters and, and the PBA to see if this will apply to them as well. So, once that's determined, we may wind up having a vote for, for them as well. But any questions from the council?
John, I'm sorry, may I say something?
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank John Mooney and Bill Dodge for coming to the table and really hashing this out with us. They did a phenomenal and quick job of just sitting down and hashing out the, the particulars of this very simple agreement, but it's a gesture that means a lot, so thank you to both of you.
And I would echo, echo on that, thank you to both of them.
Okay, so seeing no more from the council, we got any from the public, Dave?
Yes, we have James Hodge.
Okay.
Hello, well, I would like to thank you for this, thank you for allowing this to be recognized in the city of Long Beach. We could say late, but thank God it's here. Again, this is a hundred and, hundred and fifty-six years late, eighteen, eighteen sixty-three, and then two and a half years later. Somehow, it seemed like the delivery person or the messenger kept getting killed, or somehow the message never got to Texas. So, and actually, just before it got to Texas, Lincoln was killed himself. So in eighteen sixty-five, there were over two hundred and fifty thousand slaves that got the message that they were freed, but even the enslaved slaves that was freed, when they started to go out and, and speak up and let their slave owners know that they were freed, they started, it, it was lynchings, it was killings, and it was a lot of, it was bloody, it was, of course, it was the one, one of the bloodiest wars for this freedom, but again, thank, you know, the governor designated this in order, executive order two oh four, that it's a state holiday last year, and it went through with some great friends that I have in the legislature there. And it, it went through in October of twenty twenty, and so the city making this action in twenty twenty-one is, I, I thank you because again, we're still learning about history, and as we look to celebrate, everybody's history is important. Just seems like sometimes when we talk about African-American history, we just try to go by it. But again, this is good, it's forty-one years, forty-one years later, the first state was Texas in nineteen eighty. And again, you know, I'm excited that Long Beach, because again, all of our history is important. So people should look into Juneteenth and what the meaning is, because it's not just another day off. And I would love for, you know, as a community advocate and activist, I would love for the city of Long Beach to be able to celebrate within the community, because Black history is American history, and twenty-eight days ain't enough to tell the Black story because three hundred and sixty-five days of the year, everybody's history is important. So the shortest month i- 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 is, you know, and, and really the coldest month, but, but everybody's history is important. So I thank the city for taking this on as it is a state law, written into order, like I said, two oh four. And again, let us even have a celebration on that day in recognizing that it's, it was the end of slavery, recognized supposedly, you know, and it's a long story, we can talk about that.
James, that's your three minutes, please, please wrap it up.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, James.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else, Dave? Okay, anyone else, Dave?
That's it.
Okay.
I just wanted to say something. Thank you all for this, passing this, but for all of those that do not know, or were not aware, the city gave all of the employees Juneteenth off last year, and that is very important. And so even though it did not go on, I heard that it was a week late, nothing is ever too late as long as we get the job done and get a good job done. So I want to say to you all, thank you.
Good. All right, let's move on to item six.
Item six is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2020-2021 fiscal
Okay, I don't know if anybody's going to speak, but this seems pretty straightforward. We got to fix our street sweeper.
Yeah, I'll speak on it. It's just that we're moving money that we had in street maintenance and equipment rental to help prepare for vehicles. It's straightforward.
All right, any questions from any of the council members? All right, any from the public?
Roy Lester.
Okay.
Go ahead, Roy.
Okay. Normally, what do we have for the vehicle repairs? I mean, we have a fund put aside for this, and I guess this kind of caught us by surprise. But can you tell me how much that fund is?
No, Roy, Ina's not on tonight. I don't have.
Okay.
But yeah, it was the budget typically what she budgeted for, what they thought they was budgeting for. We have a whole lot more repairs than anticipated.
Oh, that's not good. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else, Dave?
That's it.
All right, let's move on to item seven.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing a budget amendment to the Community Development Fund for the 43rd program year.
All right.
And that would be Monique?
Monique, yep.
Go ahead, Monique.
Yep, thank you all. So previously, the funds were asked to be transferred. I'm reactivating that micro enterprise line. So in 2017, there was a CDBG application for the 43rd year. I wasn't here 2017, 2018, but it was to create a micro enterprise, small business development program. I realize that is more relevant now than anything based on census data, based on previous surveys. I have a North Park community survey. I have a creating resilience. So I did my history on research, it was already here, and prioritize as one of the programs that I believe community development can do, and it's to help minorities open small businesses and help already businesses that are considered a micro enterprise, five or fewer, and provide them with technical assistance, as I previously said. The reason why that it may have been transferred, to speak for those who came before me, is that there's a lot of documentation and reporting that is needed and that is required from Nassau County for such program. And my background, I have an MBA and I do small business consulting. So I believe that, well, I don't say I believe, I know that I can assist small businesses. And then being that I already have the experience, the knowledge, and the resources, it is not so costly where most, majority of the funds can go to direct activities to help out these businesses. And it could be as simple as a business plan startup, business plan assistance, software for business plan writing, marketing, small fund startup, any grants or loans. And so these are some of the activities that will go under the program. And so I find that it's necessary to reactivate and start this program to finish developing the community.
Okay, any questions from any of the council members?
I just, this is Karen. I remember asking about this, you know, back when it happened, because it looked a little confusing that we were, you know, potentially paying for an elevator, I think, from community development funds. But I feel that this micro enterprise investment is in the true, in the true spirit of the Community Development Fund programming. And I want to credit Monique for her diligence into figuring that out and to helping our small business owners, which are particularly hurting right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Karen. You're absolutely correct. I think that thanks to Donna giving me the time and the resources to find it, and Ina has helped me to locate it, and Patty, you know, just to be able to see the money there and have confidence, I really thank my coworkers for doing that. In addition to that, I had to go through a lot of screening through Nassau County to approve this program because of the reported documentation. So I will continue to need my colleagues and the city council, and of course, Donna, city manager, I'm sorry, Ms. Gaden, to assist me with this because it's a lot of documentary reporting, but I believe that we can do it, and I think the community will really, really benefit from this as a whole.
Great. Mike, you're leaning forward. You got a question?
Just a quick question because it may come up. This is the 43rd year, the next one up will be the 47th year. So if Monique could just explain briefly what resolution seven addresses and then eight thereafter. But the 43rd year is a couple of years ago?
Yes, and the goal of this also is that we've applied for these programs, and it doesn't matter who was in the position, but as the city of Long Beach, you know, to execute the program and to implement it is very important for the city and for Nassau County. So these funds have been there since the 43rd year, which is about 2017, 2018. So we're trying to do less transfers and actually do what we applied for to continue that sustainability and relationship building with Nassau County and, you know, and continue our objectives that we originally said and have it aligned to actually what the community needs right now are, so that at the end, our strategic plan looks like we're being effective. And, you know, we're optimizing our resources. So that's why I went back to the previous year as far as I can. I have highlighters and I'm asking questions about any money that's left over that we could then align to meet the goals that we're trying to meet as a whole, as our goal, as Ms. Gaden has set me up to do, all access community development program for everyone. So that's what that 43rd is. I'm using funds as previous years as I possibly can, and also to show to Nassau County that we are using every dollar. I am zero everything out. And that moves us to the 47th year with the hopes of continuing the micro enterprise because I know it will be successful and I know that it's needed, and even applying for more funds for this micro enterprise. Because as you service in a community I need, you know, the funds that we have, it's not a lot, but if we could use 47 funds to add on to this micro enterprise, I believe it would be beneficial. And so that's what number eight is. Number eight is the resolution to file for application for the 47th year that's coming up, and the application is due March 16th.
Thank you, Monique, because I just, I know it's a multiple year, you had to look back, you had to do a lot of work, you had to do a lot of alignment. This was no easy straightforward, you know, assignment. It looks easy from what I'm looking at, because that's the finished product. But what you had to do, and I'm glad you're here to do it, is you're matching up community development funds, which are needed, and you could spend it, and then we could move on and on and on. And that's the goal, and I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
All right, anyone else? All right, anyone from the public, Dave?
Yes, James Hodge.
Welcome back, Mr. Hodge.
Welcome back, President. Just wanted to say also with the community development, the community development has throughout Nassau County and a lot of communities, some of the issues that many communities have is sometimes the money is not used what it is geared towards. But I know that Marvin McMoore, Sherri James had did, and previous, had did a lot of work with the micro businesses and a lot of meetings with Patty Bond throughout North Park, throughout the city of Long Beach. And it was, again, speaking about funds and being able to put funds together to be able to help diversified businesses in the city of Long Beach and give a little helping hand with those that meet all of the criterias to be able to do that. And again, you know, for which the funds come in. And as, you know, the community, as we, you know, send out and fill out for that 47 and 43rd, 47th program year, I would say there's a lot of organizations that, again, sometimes get cut out, out of funds that could really help them out. And it's for low to moderate income. And I just think that, again, the city should continue looking to see what they can do to help all of those that meet the criteria. And not just with the community development fund, but if the urban money from the, if the urban development money goes there also, I know it's 100, over $100,000 that come from the land use of war bonds. So I just think that, hey, listen, it's great to hear that you're looking to do something with the businesses that, and you found a lot of the paperwork that was there, because I know that said it wasn't, but, you know, it's great. It's great to hear this. It's great to hear that we're looking to help out businesses and startup businesses. So, again, just happy to hear that, and let us continue to just utilize those funding, like the vice president said, for the areas which those funds are seat on behalf of. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, James. All right, anyone else, Dave?
That was all.
Okay, let's move on to item eight.
And our last item is item eight, which is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the county of Nassau for the purpose of undertaking a community development program under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, and Title II of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 as amended for inclusion in the city's community development program for the 2021-2022 47th year. This item is for publication only. A hearing will be held March 2nd at 7:00 PM. Now on to the voting. We're going to start at item number three, which is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding vehicles for hire. Would you just move the adoption of this item as amended?
I will.
I will.
Thank you. Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
We can't hear you, Dave. Your lips are moving, but we can't hear you.
Item four is of the city of Long Beach regarding, hold on. Yeah, we're having some connection issues here. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll call that one again. So item four is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding licenses and business regulations. Would you just move the adoption of this item as amended?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Thank you. Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Sorry, yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
And President Bendo?
Yes.
Item five is a resolution declaring and designating Juneteenth as an official holiday in the city of Long Beach. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
And item six is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will. Scott?
Councilmember Delory.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes, and thank you, Monique, for all your hard work.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
And President Bendo?
Yes.
Okay, item seven is a resolution authorizing a budget amendment to the Community Development Fund for the 43rd program year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
And second?
Who'd you have for the first?
I had Liz for first.
Sure, I'll take second.
Okay. Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Thank you, Monique, for all the hard work. Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
And finally, item eight is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the county of Nassau for the purpose of undertaking a community development program under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, and Title II of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 as amended for inclusion in the city's community development program for the 2021-2022 47th year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
I'll second.
Thank you. Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Who will make a motion to close the meeting?
Come on, Mike.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Whoever.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Given the fact that it's 10 after 8:00, and I begrudgingly, yes, I vote to close the meeting.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes. Okay, on to good and welfare. So everybody gets, who wants to speak, raise your hand. You get three minutes and who's first?
First up is James Hodge.
And third time's the charm.
Well, just want to, again, it's always honor to be able to come to those that are elected and be able to speak to those that, you know, govern the city and also the city administration. Just want to say happy Black History Month, each and every one of you. And also, again, thank you for adopting the Juneteenth. I, again, I would say let us continue to recognize each and everyone's history. Everyone's history is important. At the same time, let us continue to recognize the history of even our own city manager, being the first female city manager, and not just the first female city manager, but the first Black city manager. And that means a lot, you know, it means a lot because sometimes children only replicate what they see, and they don't see a lot of Black teachers in Long Beach in front of them, and sometimes they only believe that they can achieve what they see. And so I would say let us do whatever we can to be able to also, city manager, get you out in the streets with us. I'll be willing to walk you around, and I know you already do a lot. But again, as a community advocate, I know it's very important for these young ladies and these young men to see you as a person that's been in Long Beach since 1976 and knowing that it was only very few Blacks in executive positions in the history of Long Beach. Your position is very important. And so what you do in your dash from the day you start to the day you end is very important to all of the children. Also, just want to say for the police commissioner, I know that executive order 203, reimagining police departments, again, as a community activist and advocate, the community would, I'm not exactly sure how many people that you're working with, but again, Long Beach has only had about five Black police officers in the history of Long Beach, two being hired in 1968, 67. One was my mentor, and one was the president of the MLK, and that was Sergeant Murgison, the late Sergeant Murgison, and also Officer Simon and Officer Edwards and Officer Bo Madden, and then the two current that we have now, and it was 40 some odd years later in 2008, when the last two were hired, and that is Sergeant Allen and also the other officer. So I just want to say let us continue recognizing and remembering everybody, history is important. Thank the city for giving permission to the MLK to move forward programs as we still continue to meet, to go over long-term leases and all of that and whatever it would look like. But again, the children and the community has been out close to over a year, and again, very hurt, very, again, Sandy did a lot, the pandemic did a lot, and those are two major things that affected everybody, but drastically, the statistical data shows that it even impacted those that were already going through even more. So again, so thank you again. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you.
All right, and looking forward to the programs.
I just wanted to say to James, thank you very much. Just so you are aware, I am out in the community quite a bit. I actually have been out meeting some of the seniors, passing out PPNE, and Commissioner Walsh and I have actually been out shoveling snow with some of the seniors in the North Park area. So I am out there. I will continue to be out there, and when it gets warm, Commissioner and Walsh and I have made an agreement that we will be out there on a regular basis. So thank you very much. Commissioner and Walsh and I have made an agreement that we will be out there on a regular basis. So thank you very much.
Okay. And who's next, Dave?
Next is Roy Lester.
All right. Welcome back.
Hi, John. Um, John, I have to say, I, I kinda, it's kind of tough in a hundred eighty seconds, twice a month, to bring up all the topics that I'd like to address with the city and get the questions out. And I don't understand why we have to be that limited when there are only a couple of people speaking. When we have twenty or thirty, I understand. But, you know, it's something that, I think it's important to ask questions about the city and, you know, you, you guys do limit us. Anyway, I have a couple of questions and they can be addressed after I'm done. Um, whatever happened to the LG, LBGT money? And have we collected all of our Sandy money? Do we owe any out right now? Or basically are we even? And, uh, then I want to talk about the benches for a minute. Last Thursday at the work session, Tommy Cannon was talking about the benches. And he said that because of the UV rays and the saltwater environment, the benches keep breaking. And to fix the benches right now would be a hundred eleven thousand nine hundred sixty dollars. If we moved the fourth leg on the bench, it would be three hundred thousand, uh, nine, nine hundred sixty dollars. He said that they just spent thirty-five thousand four months ago and fixed every bench. And now four months later, we have to spend another hundred twelve thousand. And he said, in order to move the legs out, the benches have to be taken out and brought to the shop. That was to put the fourth leg on. But Tommy also said that would be very, it would be very expensive to use different products because the benches would have to be moved. But if they have to be moved anyway to fix it, I don't understand why it would be expensive. He said that the material we, we've been using is very brittle in the sun. And I have no idea why we would have bought benches with material that breaks down in the sun. But anyway, so last Thursday, John Bendo suggested moving the ends of the benches out and staying with the, the three legs. Everyone thought it was a great idea worth exploring. And we talked about having some sample benches. But what I don't understand is back in September seventeenth, twenty nineteen, eighteen months ago, John Miranda said the exact same thing. And now it's eighteen months later and we're coming back to an idea that we were told about a year and a half ago and nothing's been done. And during that time period, we've spent literally hundreds of thousands of dollars fixing these benches. And now we're looking at exploring an idea that was that the, our public works person who knows this stuff suggested eighteen months ago. And I know, listen, I know a hundred ten thousand dollars is not a lot of money. You know, in a eighty-three million dollar budget, but like I tell my kids, you don't flush a nickel down the toilet. It's only a nickel, but you don't flush it down the toilet. And I also don't understand when we knew this was going to be discussed at the work session, why nobody knew what the contract actually said. The people who bought the benches, do they have to pay for maintenance? But nobody bothered to look at the contract. And I didn't hear anything today about, you know, where we are with that contract or if we can actually charge the people. And I don't believe we can charge the people.
Roy, that's your time.
Can I just finish?
Wrap, wrap it up in a sentence or two. Roy, you can call and talk about this with any of us. You know that.
I know that, but why can't the public know it? I, you know, people resent it when there's private conversation. And I can understand that and I would resent it too. But anyway.
Because we can't have an hour and a half of one person taking up time at a meeting. This is the city.
I've never taken an hour and a half, John. You know, anyway, let me just finish. Right now we're charging, I believe, three thousand a bench plus a thousand installation. I went online. I found benches sold to other municipalities with fifty-year warranties made with, uh, recyclable plastic costing a single bench seven hundred sixty dollars. I don't understand it. I don't understand the money situation.
Okay, Roy, this is Donna.
Okay, Roy.
This is Donna speaking. I will have to look into the LBGT money. And look into the Sandy money. And just as we did before, we'll get the answer and we come back on next, at the next meeting so that the entire public can hear. The benches, I understand what you're saying. I can't tell you what happened in twenty nineteen. I just know where we are right now. And although it does seem like a hundred thousand dollars is not a lot of money, a hundred thousand dollars to the city of Long Beach is like a million dollars to other cities. And so we are looking at that. And the reason that it was brought up is because it is something that needs to be taken care of, but nobody knows where the money is coming from. So Roy, you and I and Ina can talk probably the beginning of the next week. And as just as we did with John Lando, we will come back on and make sure that the rest of the community has the answers to the questions that you asked. Okay?
All right.
Right. I just, I just, I just have to comment that, um, Roy, I take issue with your comment that you said that the city has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, quote unquote, since September two thousand nineteen on repairing the benches. I, I find that hard to believe and I'd love to see, um, exactly where you got those numbers from. Cause you said hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I feel that that is a disingenuous comment. Now, secondly, I also wanted to point out that last, last week was the working session. This, you saw us discussing possible solutions for the benches. Okay? When have you ever seen council members working with staff in discussions for an hour and a half prior to this administration? So I'd like you to think about that. Um, in ter- in terms of the LBGT money, Donna is following up on that, but I can confirm for you that that money was, was not, was not accrued in previous audits. So therefore, if we do get anything, it will be a, um, an add-on to any future, um, any future budgets. I hope this helps clarify some issues for you, Roy. Um, I appreciate your questions. Um, I'd love to ke- keep us with a dialogue. I also want you to remember that this council is working twenty-four working seven days a week, twenty-four hours. I talked to her, you know, most of us talk to her every day. And that we can't, we have hundreds of millions of dollars of issues, tens of millions of dollars in interest payments. So our priority is those things right now. And of course, we want to fix hundreds, hundred thousand dollars problems as well. You are promoting excellence in everything that we do. And we agree with you. So let's keep the dialogue open.
Okay. Who's, uh, who's next, Dave?
Next is Judy Vining.
Okay. Hi, Judy.
Okay. Hello.
Hi, Judy.
Hi. I guess, um, I'm probably not asking for money, so that's a good thing. I'm again asking us to take a look at our ordinance about social host. Time is running out. The proposal that the governor has put forth doesn't even allow a local option for communities under a hundred thousand to opt out, even if he chose to. So, um, there's not a lot you can do beforehand or after, but at least let's protect our kids in terms of the social hosting and make that amendment to the, um, ordinance. It seems kind of silly that I'm still asking you for this since, um, January, at least. Um, and it's a simple fix. I, I don't know if Rich is still on, but if he is, I mean, he knows what the law is and it's an add-on. It's just a, an amendment. So can we think about doing it instead of talking about it?
Yeah, there was actually a conversation today about it that, uh, I was actually part of. So, uh,
Can you share?
Uh, no, we was just talking about doing it. So, uh,
I mean, I mean, I can send you another prototype, but you don't, you, you don't need it. I don't, I don't think. I mean, what we have, our law is the prototype for fourteen counties across the state and thirty-eight communities based on our law because we were the first. Um, I also have literature um, from a paper that I was part of from Wake Forest School of Medicine on social hosting, but I don't think you need that anymore.
No, I thi- I think, uh, I think Rich knows what, what needs to get added.
Marijuana. Simple.
Talking about chapter seventeen, right, Judy?
What?
You're talking about chapter seventeen, right? Our seven, our social host?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So we're, we're on it.
Okay. Let's get on and put board the governor gives it to us and we can't be on it.
Hey Judy, did you have, you have a projection as to when the governor's role is going to be? And if any?
Well, uh, it's, he's got it tied in. Listen, we don't know what it'll be. We know what he's proposed and it's tied into the budget. So we're looking at April first. But honestly, I should probably send you guys, the council, that is, some of the things that are in it that you may want to, um, join together and object to because it removes a lot of this city's autonomy.
Judy, uh, you send it to the council and send it to the administration of the, of the city.
I can, I'm sorry, what?
Send it to the council as well as to the administration of the city.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. And there's only one other little thing and I'm going to talk fast, but, you know, we've been doing this weekend food drive from Long Beach aware in conjunction with the school district and Trader Joe's. Well, I got a call right before the vacation from West School that, um, they had collected money and they want to donate it to us. They did donate to us. They collected eleven hundred and twenty-six dollars, twen- and forty some odd cents. And, um, I just thought maybe that was such a great thing from all these kids at West School that you guys might want to recognize them for it.
Judy, that's your time.
Yeah, that's, that's great that they did that. That's, that's incredible. So, uh,
You know, it might be, I know you sometimes, um, give proclamations or whatever to kids that, you know, or, or recognized in some way. I know it's harder on Zoom, but I thought you might want to take note of it.
Well, uh, sure. We'll see. We, we'll, we'll see what we might be able to do.
Yeah, I can give you the information offline.
Yeah, yeah, please send it.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Judy. All right. Who's next, Dave?
That's it.
That's it. Wow. Okay. So thanks for joining us, folks. And, um, we will see you at the, at the next one. And everyone have a good night. Anybody got any closing? Liz, anything you need to remind anyone of?
Double masking is now required. Thank you.
And, uh, tomorrow is recycling day citywide for metal, uh, plastic and glass.
Okay. So thanks for joining us and, uh, we'll see you next time. Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Again, everyone.
Have a good night.
You too.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, Dave.
Good night.